Everybody that's here, just make sure there's a sign-in sheet somewhere around to put your name on it.
I have it here. I've got everybody.
The first item would be our first public hearing on administrative amendments to the Unified Development Bylaws. This is one of the documents that we looked at, I believe, a couple of months ago, and there was a couple of things that we had some questions about and that we were discussing about changing or having it amended, which is why it was sent back. The Planning Commission has done their work on their end with the changes as requested, and they're here to help us go over this document and to answer any questions or any concerns that people might have. That's the purpose of this public hearing, so that people could voice their concerns and questions regarding it, and so that we get a better understanding of what it is. We've got people from the Planning Commission here. We've got our zoning administrator, Hugh Quinn.
Tim Roper.
Kathy Hasbrook.
And I think online we might have Phil Perla. He's from the Development Review Board. But they're here to help us understand what these changes are and to answer any questions. So at this point, Hugh, I'll turn it over to you. You're the chairman of the Planning Commission, and give us a little background on this and how it all works.
Yeah, so, thanks, Arnie. I'm just gonna give a couple of key dates, and then I'm gonna turn it over to Preston to kind of cover the details of the changes we made to the language. So as you recall, or as you stated, this is a work that's been in progress since early in the year. We have reviewed these proposed changes with the DRB early in, or mid-January. It first came to the Select Board May 3, and in that meeting, we agreed that there was some things we wanted to take a look at a little more closely and iron out. So the Planning Commission went back, and on the 15th of May, we had a really good, productive joint meeting really between the Planning Commission and the Select Board to sort of hash through some of the discussion topics that we were, that came out of the first meeting. On the 5th, the Planning Commission unanimously voted to re-submit the language into your decision tonight for your consideration. So that's sort of the timeline. And with that said, I'm gonna sort of turn it over to Preston to go over the nitty-gritty.
Sure. Oh, yeah, alright. Okay, fair enough. I think I'm gonna be lazy and sit down, since I can get the mic in close, anyway. I'm not planning to go back over all of the administrative changes unless there are questions about it. There are, there is this sheet that was in your package, which tries to give chronology of where we're at. The first question that the Select Board asked the Planning Commission to reconsider was under 3.22, renewable energy facilities. We had this note, which just was clarification for me and successive zoning administrators to say that anything that gets a certificate of public good from the Vermont Public Utilities Commission is exempt, which is state law. And Lee, who's in the business, and some others, said, "Well, how come if 95% of the applications are exempt, that anybody that isn't net metered suddenly has to go through all this rigmarole?" And the thought was to just simply broaden the exemption in the exemption section. But the more that we looked at it, the more we said, "There's a page and a half under Section 3.22 that either we just keep or we care rid of." I mean, it would almost be contradictory to put an exemption in the exemption section and then leave that. So Lee was present for that meeting, and he seemed to acknowledge it. Basically, what we said is, "Let's, for this purpose, just leave that unchanged, put in the note that we suggested, leave the rest, but the Planning Commission would commit to go back and look at it again, and just really decide, do we need this chapter, or do we need some form of this chapter?" The second one has to do with self-contained travel in camper trailers. Lots and lots and lots of talk about self, you know, camper trailers. The Select Board talked a lot about it. The Planning Commission talked a lot about it. Most of the Select Board members were actually present for a Planning Commission to talk about it. In the end, we decided to leave it unchanged, and there it is. We can, you can, I guess when I'm done, you can, you can discuss it. But basically, it's limiting to two travel campers on a property year-round, or at least more than 180 days. And if it's more than that, then it would be considered a campground. Anyway, the next has to do with roads. We had some language in there that made Julie rather nervous, that the town could be committed to maintaining roads to highway road standards, or confirming that roads are being maintained to highway road standards, or inspecting. And so we have changed that rather significantly, and said very, very clearly that any new roads that are, happen as a part of the subdivision process, that the Development Board may require a professional engineer at the sole expense of the applicant to certify that a newly-constructed road was designed and constructed in accordance with the town's road and bridge standards. Also, we kind of discovered in this process that there was some dispar, you know, conflict between the zoning bylaws and the road and bridge standards, where the zoning bylaws said any private drive that served more than one residence becomes a road, and the road and bridge standards says any drive that serves more than two residents becomes a road. So we decided that the easier way would be to make the zoning conform to the, to the road and bridge standards. By the way, the road and bridge standards are generated by the state, anyway, so I mean, it's just, that was the easier one to change. It would not be easy to change the other one. And I personally am fine with that. So we did have to change the definition of road. We did have to change the description on the right-of-way's. And then finally, there was a provision in that the Planning Commission suggested, which was that you could have, to give the DRB the ability through the subdivision process to permit multiple principal structures on a lot. Right now, the Chester bylaws only allow one principal structure per lot, and Select Board, the sense of the Select Board seemed to be that because that decision could be made through a PUD, a Planned Unit Development, we didn't need that, and the Planning Commission discussed it and said, "Fine." They would, they agreed, probably didn't need that. So those are the changes for the administrative that we're proposing.
So those are the four that we, that we had questions with and we talked about. Are there any questions or any concerns from the board members? We'd start one at a time. I guess the first one was the camper one? And that allows two on a piece of property?
Yes.
For 180 days each?
To be occupied, yes.
Any questions or concerns? I'll get to you, sir, in a second, and I will take it out to the audience in a second. I just want to make sure that the board is okay with what's going on and the changes as they are written right now.
As I understand it, the language is the same as it was the first time we saw the document on May 3, correct?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
And if there's someone that would like to speak to this from the audience, now would be the time to come forward, sir. Just come up to the microphone and give us your name, please.
Yeah, my name is Lenny Newcombe. I live on Route 10. I own a business called The Rocker Doctor. I'm a metal fabrication specialist. Yes, I have more than two campers on my yard. Two of them are covered in plastic behind a stockade fence, waiting for the deposit to fix their roofs. The third one is my storage unit. It's a small one, it's only a 10-foot, nothing inside, completely gutted. It's for my body panels. It's come to my attention on many different things, other than the campers. There's a, what I call a conflict of interest between Mr. Quinn, his wife, and my wife, with many verbal outbreaks across the properties. I've put up stockade fences across the front of my yard. I've put up stockade fences across half my yard. It's been brought to the point where the cops have been called because I'm standing outside of my garage door, but yet no cops are called when the jake break lets drop over the knoll in front of Mr. Quinn's house. Many times, I don't know where to go from here. I have unregistered vehicles in the yard, because I have North Country Auto, Auto Connection, P&amp;M Auto, and other dealerships dropping vehicles off, taking their dealer plates while I repair them.
At this point, I'd be more concerned about your statement regarding a camper, how, you know, your opinion on that. The fact that you might be having some issues with your neighbor and stuff, I don't know if this is the proper place to be airing something like that, that's going on with your neighbor and stuff. If it's specific to the camper issue, then I would entertain listening to what that is.
It seems like there's a conflict of interest in, you know, what can be done on my property and what they can't, and I think there's a conflict of interest in Mr. Quinn on the Planning Board.
So can I just jump in here? The language that we're talking about right now relates to self-contained travel or camper trailers, maybe stored year-round, but occupancy of a self-contained travel or camper is limited to not more than 180 days.
Yeah, these are not occupied. They need to have power or anything.
Right. So that's what I'm saying, is that I'm not sure that this apply, I mean, I'm not the one that's gonna make that judgment, but just reading this...
It's storage or occupancy.
Well, this, that's not what this says.
Yeah, that... Storage says...
Storage of two, okay, I see what you're saying.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah. Again, it's not my jurisdiction to tell you how to do that, but...
And how does that, you know, apply to me? If they're there as part of my small business, and they're not occupied, there's no power. When they leave me, they're gonna go have full electric and done everything, because the roofs have ruined everything inside. There's nobody occupying them. They're there to have the roofs repaired.
And they're there as part of a legal business, I presume, that you've been running for...
Yes, for two and a half years.
I, I don't...
And I am an LLC.
I don't see the issue as if it's a legal business and it's part of your business. I doubt if that pertains to something like this. It's more about occupancy and using it as a camper for people to be residing it and stuff. That being said, also, I don't think that a lot of these bylaws, when they do get enacted, that someone's gonna be running around checking properties to see if there's an issue or what's going on.
Right.
And keeping track with people that are living in it or not living in it. And I mean, that could happen if there's a complaint, I would imagine, but I don't see that happening in a case like this. I don't know what to say to you as far as, can I guarantee some, I don't see that happening. That's not the purpose of our, of the Select Board.
Well, will there be zoning, planning, Select Board? Because I do run a metal repair business. If the law, if the thing was to change, am I affected? Am I grandfathered as an existing business?
I, it's, I don't know what the answer would be on a hypothetical like that, about what would happen in the future. Right now, you have a legal business, and you're, and you're carrying on a legal business, and that's part of it, that what you're doing.
Wouldn't that be the purview of the zoning administrator?
Yes.
I would think that the guy to talk to is sitting there, Preston, I think he's the one who would address your concerns and be able to walk you through the process of what if anything he's been...
...been in my house, and we would discuss the different areas.
Do you mind passing the mic, or it can come out of the rack? Yes, I have been to Lenny's house, and we have, we have discussed his business, and it would be ideal if he could do it somewhere else than at his house, and he's been looking, but he hasn't found anything to do it. I'm aware there's been the three travel campers there. I haven't actually asked you what they are used for. One of them, you said, it's just, it's not even roadware, illegal, you're just storing in it?
Yeah, it's not even a door.
Yeah, so I mean, that I would kind of say is, changed its use and not really a camper anymore.
That's a shame.
And then the other two, if you are, I mean, they've been there a long time, but I mean, if you are actively hoping someone will pay you to fix the roof, then I think it's part of your business, I guess, you know. So I, I'm not foreseeing that, that this would be a problem for you, that's all.
I guess that's, uh, Mike, it turns. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else have any other questions or comments regarding the first item that we're talking about as far as the campers go? So the consensus of the board, the consensus of the board is that we're okay with that section with, regarding campers, the way it is written?
I'm gonna vote no on it.
Yeah, no, that's the way it works.
You know, the way it's written, the way it's written.
Yep, yep. Now, the next item, the issue regarding solar, whether it's on the grid or off the grid, and I guess it's gonna be addressed at a future, future meetings, when you finally look over this whole topic in general, as opposed to just trying to fix one small part of it. So it will be revisited. It's just not gonna be on this change and this amendment. So are we okay with that as far as we're going forward?
That's basically no change.
It's pretty much stays the same.
So a change was proposed on May 3, but now there's no change. Is that accurate?
That's accurate. I mean, there is a, you know, the original submission to you, which still is coming forward, has this note simply indicating that if it's...
Right.
That if it's part of the grid, it's exempt, which, as I said, is merely informative because of state law. And, yeah, I mean, it, it's just, you know, Lee makes a good point that, gosh, like I said, if 95% of them are exempt, why should the five not be exempt? But on the other hand, we're just not quite ready yet to just say, "Let's just X this whole chapter out. I think we want to look at it again."
Understood.
And there may be some middle ground. So you're right, that's, that's just simply staying the way it's currently in the bylaw right now.
It seems like it works better this way, when we take topics, parts of topics, and able to check them out and analyze them a little better than a huge document all at once, which is what's happening with all, everything that's going forward.
And I do want to emphasize that, that we kind of, it was a little before my time, but when Brandy Saxton came forward with this enormous document, it was just like, there's just no way we can get this passed.
Right.
And so we're nibbling at it in pieces, and it means you get to see pieces, but I think it's more understandable to the public, and I think it probably comes up with a better product, because when you do this massive big document, it's sort of like to play on the Washington scene, where they said, "We're not gonna be sure of what it is until we pass it and try to use it," you know?
So we're okay with the solar? The next one was the roads, roads and bridges, and I guess that was worked out with Julie and the Planning Commission as far as the details on that, and the conditions and the standards. They are state standard, so there's not really much we could do, and that's what it kind of is coming down to. And I think that was it for the roads and bridges parts of it. The last thing was the DRB and the principal structures, having a second principal structure without having to go through the planned development process. So it was left to be just the one principal structure, and there is a process to having more than one on the property. It's a little more involved than just granting the permission, but it was basically the way it was before, so.
So does that mean that there can be more than two, or is it limited to just one other than the principal structure? Because I didn't hear that, and I may not have been listening correctly.
You know, I have worked for various towns other than Chester, and not all towns have the provision we have. Some do allow more than one principal structure per lot. Chester's is one principal structure per lot. I wouldn't mind personally if we made that, if we allowed more, but the Planning Commission has felt that they want to keep it that way. And there are arguments for both, but what it does mean is you can have secondary uses or accessory uses, but it does mean if you have one house on a property, then the second house has to be an accessory dwelling unit, and has to meet that requirement of being smaller.
I don't think that's true in a PDU.
That's correct.
That, in a PDU, that's not true.
Right.
So you can, with the PDU, and the change that was made, so you can, you don't have to be set up with a sewer, the PDU changes are, you can actually have more than one principal dwelling on a piece of property.
Yes, it's absolutely true. So that's what, that's, that was, I guess, the consensus, was that we didn't need to tinker with it, because the PDU had that option.
Right.
PDU means going to the Development Review Board. It's, well, it's sort of a big deal, but it doesn't have to be that big a deal. I think we've all agreed, so, yeah. So somebody could, could do it that way and make their case to the DRB and get approval. And certainly for things like affordable housing, that was, that does happen. I mean, I'd use the example of Pleasant Brook, you know, there's three pods of buildings there on one lot, and it would be kind of silly to subdivide it, but the PDU allows you to do that.
Right. I think on, on a case like that, it's not a bad idea to have a second set of eyes on it with the PDU, and I could see where it would make sense to not have a long involved process to add a second dwelling unit, but in a lot of cases, it is. And I would think that involves the neighbors and the changes and everything, so let everybody know about it. And I think that's not a bad thing. And we, and there's, there is a process in place already to make it happen, so it's not like we're disallowing them. They just have to go through the steps that were in place before this.
No, there was one more change to it, and the change was, you had to be before, you had to be hooked up to municipal water and sewer. But the change in the PDU now, you don't have to be hooked up to water and sewer. So you just have to fight with the state over your water and sewer.
I would think if you had to be hooked up to water and sewer, you're limiting projects. I mean, you don't have to be on town water and sewer to have more than one dwelling.
That's what it reads now.
That's what it reads now.
Yeah.
That's an improvement.
I didn't bring that up simply because it wasn't in the batch of things that were sent back to the Planning Commission to reconsider, but Peter is absolutely right, and I'm quite pleased with that change, because I, I don't know if it happens very often, but I've had people say, "Well, gee, I'd like to have a family compound and, you know, and have three cabins," you know, like, "Well..." You know, but, you know, the BUD lets you do that. Yep.
Yeah, that was a change that was, that came from, with the last group, but we didn't, we didn't have any problems with it.
Right.
That was fine. Any other questions or concerns on the principal structure part of this? Anybody else from the audience or on Zoom that has any questions or comments regarding the administrative amendment to the Unified Development Bylaws? If not, we'll close this public hearing.
I have one more comment. Before this is closed, the Planning Board was not aware at the last meeting that I attended, that they are also bound by the disclosure policy of the town. And that is a new, a new step for them. And I think that going forth, they maybe need to take a little more look at what they're actually responsible for.
Are you directing that to the board here?
That's, yeah, that is, I'm putting it out there, that they, when I was there, they hadn't, I asked about a disclosure, disclosures that I had made over the years and why there weren't any others, and they were totally unaware of the policy.
So noted.
So just to be clear, Peter, you were talking about the, the policy, the conflict of interest policy?
Conflict of interest, please.
It is entitled conflict of interest, and the Select Board passed it in 2016, is my guess.
Yep.
And Peter brought it up, and we had kind of said, "We don't think we have one," and then I looked at that one the Select Board had, and it said it applies to...
All the boards.
All, all elected and appointed officials. So yes, now we're, we're clear that that applies to everyone.
And, and when I think of conflict of interest, we all have, maybe not conflict of interest, but we all have different interests. We all live in a small town, and there's a lot going on, and everything that we do affects people, our neighbors, other people, and it's, it's hard to avoid. Now, the conflict of interest specifically talks about monetary gain and personal gain, and that's a hard area to define. Most of it that's on the conflict of interest is voluntary for people to speak up when they feel it's necessary. I, I personally think the Planning Commission does a fantastic job with what they do and what they balance and all the things that go on there, and I have no problems at all there, nor do I see any conflict of interest going forward from that board. Any other comments or concerns regarding our first public hearing? So we'll close our first public hearing, and we'll move on to our second one, which is open spaces, which is a whole new area of town. I guess it's a whole new zone. And this is our first look at this one. It's pretty straightforward, and the Planning Commission is here to help us through this process also. So I guess, Hugh, and then...
And I'll just sort of kick it off, and I'll leave Preston to discuss the details, which I appreciate that. Thanks for doing that, buddy. So Open Space is a new district. It's basically a district of parcels that are in and around the Village Center area, but that are also located in the floodway fringe area. So previously, it was handled under what's called an overlay district, and the overlay district still applies, but as a way to make it more clear for landowners that have a parcel in this space, we created this district, so there's clarity on if you're in this district or not in the district, what you're really allowed to do with those parcels. And so that was, you know, the spirit behind the change. We did send letters to every landowner that had a parcel in that district, so that they could, A, understand it, B, engage with the Planning Commission if there was something that they wanted to know more about. We did have one landowner, Jeff Holden, came to a meeting, our first public hearing. We discussed a couple of things that he had questions about, but ultimately, he was fine. And so here we are at, at this meeting to, to put it forward to the Select Board. So I'll let, Peter, I mean, I'll let Preston?
Yep.
Got the right first letter.
Yeah, I know.
I feel better now, Hugh, thanks.
Yeah, just try.
I'll start out with giving us a little history on this. The first thing is that Peter is the one that came up with the idea initially. He envisioned it kind of being a bigger district than what we ultimately came up with. And Hugh is right, Chester, as is required by the state, has a district that covers all federally mapped floodplain, but that district is an overlay district, which means that other districts are under it. And this area that's the, the new Open Space District, it was, the district under it was a residential district, and that, we're talking here, I mean, you've seen the map, but I'll describe it again. It's kind of the major lowland along the Williams River from Church Street all the way down to Peck Road, and if, I wasn't in Chester during Irene, but I've heard stories. I mean, it just filled up like a big cauldron and was swirling with water. It's an area that, you know, from a flood point of view, is very good for water storage. It keeps it from going down and wiping out Bellows Falls. And it just seemed, when Brandy Saxton did her planning, she took it out of a residential district and put it in a general business district. And, but anyway, after Peter first suggested, Jason Rasmussen from the Planning Commission and I talked about it, and Jason said, "This is really a great idea, and a lot of towns do open space districts." So we worked hard to try to identify the most critical flood storage areas, and to define the district, so that any high ground that rose out of, above floodplain was excluded, so that it's just only land that's in floodplain. And it just simply fits a lot better than having one of our other districts under it. It's still subject to the, the flood overlay district, but it's a district that we've just clearly said, "This is just not an appropriate area for construction of buildings or businesses," or, you're rather... or, you're rather, houses. We tried very hard to make it clear that civic activities can happen there, that it's perfectly fine to have, you know, a fair or something like that, to have recreational facilities. We tried to be clear that even though it's maybe not the best from a purist point of view, that it was certainly fine to have, you know, a baseball dugout or, you know, a fence for a backstand or something like that. And, and certainly agricultural and forestry things are allowed there. So as Hugh said, we did, and Kathy put a fair amount of effort into not only sending letters to these people, but actually having a map of their property showing where this district was. And as Hugh said, the, the only person that responded, was there about 17, Kathy, is it?
Yeah.
Yeah. The only person that responded was Jeff Holden on behalf of the Legion. And his concern was that he wanted to be sure there was a bit of high ground across the treatment plant road that they were hoping they could someday put bathroom facilities in. And he wanted to make sure that was out of the district and we looked over the map and told him, yes, it's out of the district and yes, you could do that. So that was the only comment we got. So here we are before you. Think at that point, I'll just, you know, and the overlay district still applies to other floodplain elsewhere in town. It's just that this open space district tries to identify the most key portion. Well, nothing permitted or permitted or what were you saying?
Nothing is permitted in there without DRB.
Oh, yes, you're absolutely right. There's, which is kind of, Peter did ask, did we bring this new district concept to the DRB? The answer is no, we didn't. But the flood overlay rules just don't change. It's just, it's just a change of the name under it. So, yeah. So everything that happens there would go through DRB review. Yeah.
So a lot of those properties that are the overlay district, are they also like, people own property in both districts? Their house might be partly in this and partly in that.
When you can, it's a nice principle to have districts follow property boundaries. In this case, the district follows the flood boundary. So there are many people who have a house and then the backyard slopes down into this district and where it slopes down into this district, that's where it is. So yes, this one is, it had, yeah, has a lot of, has a lot of properties where the district line goes through their property, but we've made it clear that the district line and the flood boundary are the same thing.
And it doesn't affect their ability to build or do anything on their regular property only because it's there. It's totally separate.
There's, flood boundaries are a bright line test. You're, you're in the flood on one side and out of the flood on the other, which people know for a practical sense is silly, but that's how the rules work. And there's no setback, there's no buffer zone or anything. So you could, in theory, build a house within a foot of flood boundary and as long as you can document that that's the flood boundary, legally you can do it. We in the zoning world are sometimes told to advise them that
Maybe not a great idea.
Do it that way, but that's how they work.
If it's an arc. Any questions from the board?
I just have one quick question. Before this language existed, if I lived on one of those properties with a backyard in the floodplain and I wanted to put in a gazebo and a shed, before today, could I just do that or before today, could I just not do that?
Before today, before this change, it would be the same as after the change, which is that you would have to have the DRB review it. And what they do, there is the concept of minor structures. And again, we're dealing with FEMA, they'll, they'll say gazebo is a minor structure. But, I mean, it can even be as simple as a picnic table or something, but when you go through DRB review, the advice is going to be if you're going to put that in floodplain, it needs to be anchored. You know, so it's that kind of thing.
But that was
Screw anchors you can put in the ground with a chain wrapped around it.
But that was the same thing I would do if I wanted to do that last year
Right.
versus next year. Same process.
My feeling is that the change in the name of the district makes a lot of sense to a planner, but the reality is that what you have to go through in order to get an approval hasn't changed. Yeah.
Thank you.
I have a question also. Under the purpose, the statement is this district, which is entirely within FEMA's map, special floods hazard area, protects critical floodplain resources, including wetlands, wildlife habitat, natural flood storage, which provides erosion control in the event of a flood and limits the uses beyond what is allowed under the flood damage prevention overlay district. Appropriate uses in this district include agriculture, forestry, recreation, civic, cultural, educational, social events. This district is not appropriate for residential uses. How much of that language comes directly from either the state or FEMA? And do we have any ability to modify what the state or FEMA recommends?
That language was some creative writing between Jason Rasmussen and myself.
Okay.
So I'm not going to say that any of those words couldn't be changed. It's not like, oh, that's what state law requires. So I mean, if there's something in that list that you find, you're uncomfortable with, it could be sent back and it could be changed.
Okay. No, actually, I, I appreciate that and I'm kind of surprised, not at the wording, which I think is great, but that the fact that the feds and the state don't have their fingers in this pie at this point. But I, I think that the intent, the purpose of this district is well defined.
Yeah.
And I think you've made it clear what things you can do and what things you shouldn't do. And as Arianna pointed out, anything you're going to do in this overlay or this district, open space district is going to require some kind of review by the DRB.
I can tell you in all candor that this is not something that was generated by the state, even though I'm, we haven't really told them we're doing it. I mean, it just made sense to us. It certainly meets their goals, but it's not something that they came wagging their finger at, said we had to do.
Oh, good. Well, thank you.
I mean, some of these maps were helped along the way from insurance companies because it comes down to money on whether they're going to insure a structure that's going to be in one of these areas and they don't, they don't want anything to do with it if it's going to cost them money and someone's allowed to build a house like that. So the overlay district was similar to this. This is just more specific for a floodplain area and a little more added protection, it seems.
A little more added protection, yes.
So what's an example of a civic or an institutional use?
If you, well, I'll pick on the Legion property as an example. They have certain activities on their field that is in floodplain. And I don't know enough about what goes on in town. And I remember Barry's Big Buzz was down there one year. I think they do some other things. That's what we were trying to get at. The other thing is the Mackenzie Field in, in this district and that's another recreation, civic use. I think we were trying to say those things are okay.
Questions, concerns?
Yeah.
Well, the biggest, the biggest thing that the district was, it's, it's for me, it's always been deceptive because you come into Chester and you say, here's this big open land and, you know, it could be commercial, it could be that, and it, it's not. And this clearly just, it's floodplain and that's what it is. And you can't call it, you know, you can put it on another, you can put other things over it, but it's still going to be floodplain. So make it an open district. It's civil stuff. I mean, I think, for instance, when you look at this, it is a great place to think about trails and things like that next to the river. You know, it's going to be a floodplain, you know, let's, you know, we should, it should be land that can be utilized, although it's in a floodplain. And by calling it out specifically for what it is, it makes it more obvious for the, for the proper use.
And things like parking lots are fine in floodplain because they don't deserve the floodwater. So
Right.
They're not hard to prove.
Right.
I mean, you have to go to the DRB, but they're not hard to say yes.
It almost seems when I look at the map and the definition here that there probably could be other areas in town that could be included in it because there's a lot more floodplain that's, than just what's shown on this map.
Gets spotty. It gets, it gets spotty.
Yeah, and it's hard to define one small little area.
Right, and you, you would be hard, this, this is big enough so they couldn't put your finger on it and say it's spot zoning.
Yeah.
Who knows?
It, it could be expanded. There are definitely some areas in town with some fairly big expanses of floodplain, but to just say everything that is under, you know, FEMA map is, is this district would be, we, well, first of all, one of the principles too is to start modest and see how it works. But, yeah, it, that was a little too big of a step.
Isn't a lot of our center village in town under the FEMA map of, of being in a floodplain or close?
What, not a lot. I think what you're thinking of is the state has the river corridor designation. A lot of the downtown is in river corridor. We as a town have not chosen to recognize river corridor. I personally would have a hard time recommending that we recognize river corridor, but any project that goes to Act 250, we'll consider river corridor. So, you know, you, it kind of gets you that way. But not too much of the downtown areas in the map floodplain.
Anybody have any questions? Anybody out on Zoom or on the board? Hearing done, we will close our second public hearing. And from the looks of it, it seems like we probably will be using agenda items later on to possibly adopt these two changes as, as they have been presented later on in the Thank you for all your help and all your work, Planning Commission, Preston. I got your name right this time. I wrote it down, so it's straight. I know it's a lot of time and effort to get through all this and to accomplish what you have and it's, and it's well, well done. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is additions or deletions to the agenda. And we have one that should be coming up and Julie, she told us about, Naomi Johnson got ahold of us today and the asset management plan. They have an amendment to the loan application, which we'd like to add after signing loan documents for the secondary well. It's just some paperwork. It's just to make sure that this process continues on and that our application gets brought forward. So I'd like to add that to our agenda after number 10. So it would be the new number 11 and then onward from there. Everybody okay with that?
Fine with me.
Any other additions, deletions to the agenda? Hearing done, we'll move on to the next item, which is to approve our minutes from our June 7th Select Board meeting.
Make a motion to approve the June 7th Select Board meeting minutes.
Second.
Please motion. Arianna's the second. Anybody have any changes, corrections, errors, omissions, anything on the Select Board minutes?
I have none.
I have none.
All set. All those in favor of approving the minutes as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Aye.
Nope. Arianna's moving now.
I approve.
We can't close the blinds.
Is it, is it my soft voice?
No, it's the sun.
Oh, the sun.
She's right at that chair.
Next item on our agenda is citizens' comments. If there was someone here that would like to address the board regarding an issue that is not on the agenda, now would be the time to do so. Any citizens' comments? No one out there in Zoom either? Old Business. Julie, can you take us through our old business list?
I can. Water sewer rates, as you know, Sil and I attended a training, just kind of update ourselves on those. So we're working through our financials, determining kind of a plan moving forward. So you'll have that on your agenda for August 2nd. We don't, those rates don't go in effect till the billing, which goes out mid-August. So you'll have that for your August 2nd meeting. Short-term rentals, I know you had asked for that to be on the next agenda item. Preston and Hugh have done some training utilizing the limited data that we do have from Granicus. Preston is working with them to kind of keep that moving. And the Planning Commission is going to be reviewing their recommendation to the board on next steps. So that will also be on your August 2nd agenda. There is, I just put for informational purposes in your packet, a couple of spreadsheets, project lists, just, I know not everybody has been really up to date on everything that is going on in our town. There's a lot. So I did that for myself to manage some projects, so that's just information for you guys as a board. Parking on the green, there's been some chatter on Facebook, I'm not going to address any of that, other than I will just simply thought I would take the opportunity to update the board. So, and Hugh had reached out to me as well. So as you all may remember, we received a grant for paving of the parking at Cobley to expand that parking area and pave it. That is still underway. We have to clear historic preservation of the state first. Likely paving will take place this fall. If not, it'll be first thing in the spring. The other part of that project that will likely be funded separately if we cannot do the work ourselves is Peter and Kathy, I think two or three years ago maybe started working on finding access from Cobley up to the green. So we'll be looking at creating a footpath that comes behind the green and up in, a couple of different options there. So that whole thing will be developed as overflow parking for the green. And maybe that word gets out and can calm some nerves of some people that are upset. And just update the board. The other thing that is not in your email is, so as you know, the Julian public hearing is Monday. I know many of you are planning on attending the site visit. So there are some rules that have come out and really I guess I'd like to get, and Preston kind of needs a head count of who is going to attend. The site visits because of their obligation to meet MSHA, VOSHA, MSHA, OSHA, all of them. If you attend a site visit, you will need to have a hard hat. You will need to have eye protection. Glasses are not, your regular glasses do not work.
This is, this is Julian that are making these conditions for the site visit or is just, just protocol?
This is protocol. For them, for them to meet their MSHA and OSHA rules, their mining standards and this is what's required to be in a pit.
That's interesting since they don't follow many other rules, but yeah, okay.
But we're going to rise above. Eye protection, the hearing protection is required. You got to have regular shoes, no flip-flops, and body protection, long sleeve shorts, no shorts.
Talking about safety vests.
And they're, oh, and that doesn't, but, oh, safety vests and safety vests. So I guess my question for you is, you know, who wants to go? And do you have all your required PPE?
Yep.
Okay. Yes, you two probably would. Are, do you guys going?
Yep.
I'm planning to go, yes.
Okay, and you both?
I have all that.
I'm assuming you have all that.
Yep.
I'm assuming you have all that. I will check in with Heather to see if she wants to go. So you, you definitely do have four.
Okay.
Okay? I will let Preston answer that because he's dealing with Jim Carroll on this.
All came to my attention today. So the plan is to get the word out tomorrow, say that members of the, the government will come, but that this is what they're requiring.
Yep.
This is, this is early before, yep, yep. So, hopefully, you've got, yep.
So where are we meeting? The first one is North Corrin?
No, actually, they propose that we actually meet at the Stone Store.
Stone Store.
And that we'll have vans available, well, at least two vans. It's, I realize that some people, if we just don't reach them, they may not learn that information, but there'll be one van that the state will provide and one van that, yeah, that's Corrin will provide.
Yep.
And they're like 12 seater vans. That'll at least reduce the, some of the parking seats.
And that's at 3:00?
First site visit, first site is visited at 3:00.
Yeah, so now it's meet at the Stone Store at 3:00.
Anything else, Julie?
No, that's it.
Any board members, anything on old business?
The, the project list?
Yes.
When is a better time to comment on that? Because I have, there's Because I have, there's, in my reading, for instance, there's, we could partition Route 35 to the state, and then it actually can, the legislature can actually move for the state to adopt the maintenance of 35. And there are four towns, three towns, that go through our legislative district representative and two senators.
So I looked into that a few years ago.
Yeah.
I was kind of told it'd be a cold day in hell before the state's going to take that.
Well, yeah, but that's why you go.
Especially because of the problems that they have.
Well, yeah, but the thing is, you're going to go through the legislature.
I understand, but there's a process to get to it. It's not, it's not that direct. It's not that direct, Peter.
It's not that.
It's not that direct. First of all, legislature has to even be willing to look at it. And when you talk to the chairs of different transportation committees, kind of the consensus is, yeah, we're not looking at that. We're not taking over your problem road. But coincidentally, we seem to get all the federal funding that we need to fix Route 35 now. So that's where a lot of our grant money is coming from, to actually repair the road to the point of where it doesn't have, we don't have to keep paving every three years. We're actually getting work done, so the road is holding up. But no, I tried that, not that we can't try it again, but I got laughed at all the way from Montpelier home.
Wait, but we're going through, if we take the whole road, so you have four Select Boards, you have four towns on a numbered road.
Mm-hmm.
That's, and just start it in the legislature. Don't, if it's a bill that ends up on the wall, it's a bill that ends up on the wall. But there are bills that end up on the wall every year.
Well, we can certainly talk to our representative and our senators and see if they are willing to put it forth as a bill. Certainly, if that is a charge a Select Board wants to take, that is certainly, I can't, I as town manager cannot get a bill on the wall.
No, no, that's true.
You can certainly go to your senators.
Well, the thing is, you would try to get Chester, Grafton, Athens, New Fane.
Well, Peter, I think maybe on their new business, we can add this to an agenda item and have a longer discussion on this and see where it can take us and what we can or can't do.
Yeah.
Yep. We'll figure it out from there.
Absolutely. We can try again.
Can try, right.
I don't mind getting laughed at twice. Okay.
We did, we have gone down this road.
We have gone down this road.
Well, a better analogy, we've gone down this road and it hasn't gotten us anywhere except.
Down the road, at the stream. We've been out, I've been everywhere.
Anything else on their old business? Next item is an adoption of our administrative amendment to the Unified Development bylaws. I would entertain a motion to accept the document as written, and it be added to our Unified Development bylaws.
I'll make the motion.
Lee is the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion on this?
I would like to make a comment on the record, if I may. As most people in the room are aware, I have concerns regarding the camper designations in the proposed development bylaw. To share a very brief anecdote, I found myself in my kitchen two weeks ago, completely not thinking about any of this, and having to make the decision that I needed to go find an RV because my son and his new wife can't find a home. So they just got a job, they just got married, and they're moving to the area. And I sat there for an hour and a half deciding that they needed to move into an RV in my driveway before I even recognized that this has been the topic that I have been causing issues for. So for the record, the campers are associated with the affordable housing crisis. I'm not going to block this. But we need to be aware of our fellow citizens and people in need who may need to live in a camper. Because right now, if you don't have more than $300,000, you don't have a place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Arianna. Part of, part of my concern when we did talk about this, are the rules and regulations that sometimes we do adopt, but we do have some flexibility. And I realize that's not the best way to go sometimes, but sometimes that's part of being a compassionate town, that we have to be. And if every law and every rule and regulation was enforced to the nines and to the exact, it would be havoc out there, and there wouldn't be any society left, I don't think. But I understand your point, but it does leave a little bit of leeway there as far as 180 days.
Yep.
Two campers to meet the needs and, you know, for people that are struggling. And I don't see our Development Review Board or zoning administrator running around town trying to evict people out of properties that are, need a place to live and do what they have to do. It's not ideal, I guess, but it's what we have, and I think it's more to prevent a misuse of something like this, where someone maybe just wants to pop up three or four campers in his neighborhood, and that's what he's going to do because he can. And we have no way to address that. And he's just doing it for the money, not for the compassion, not for a family member, not for someone in need. So it's hard to draw a line, I think, between the two sometimes. Any other questions, comments?
So, Peter, I wanted to get your opinion, because you had said earlier you wouldn't vote for this particular aspect of it, and just wanted to get.
Well, one, I think my biggest issue is if you look at, the board had two things that we were very concerned about. And the answer from the Planning Board was, we're not going to change them. We're just going to bring it back up. And for me, that's really a big disappointment, that our input is, we're just going to put it back before you again. And I think all of us are concerned. It's just, it doesn't, for me, it doesn't make sense. You've got to make one, yes, this does not solve the housing problem, but it solves something currently. And you can say, we're not going to enforce it. But this was, if you read the meeting minutes, this was pretty well targeted at an individual. And that's a real, that for me, really makes it a no. And that's, and that's, it's so, it's that, you're going to pick out, pick out specific cases that are obvious to you, and you're going to call them out. And the housing crisis is not going to be saved by this, but you're going to have to sit there and do one little piece at a time. You just can't afford to live in the town. And it's the town people who are going to suffer for it. You know, we're getting the people who buy the house that was $600,000, it's a million and a half now. We're going to raise the property tax on those people tonight. And then you're going to say, well, I'm sorry, you can't rent your house out for an Airbnb and live in a trailer to try to stay here. Doesn't make sense to me, I'm sorry.
All those parts of it, and I understand what you're saying, but when it went back to the board, it went back intact because we had a split board on it. We had disagreements on it. It didn't come back only because they didn't want to do anything. They were also taking a reading on the board and what the board was going to lean towards or not. So whether we, sometimes we don't agree on everything.
Right. Well, the same thing to renewables. You know, if you're off-grid, you're going to have to jump through the hoops.
Yeah. Until we could change it, until something better comes along in the housing crisis, like you said, isn't going to be solved by this law right now.
No, we're not talking about that. We're talking about the, if you're off-grid.
No, I know that, but I'm sorry, I just mentioned that as an example about things that we might not agree upon sometimes. Any other further discussion on this? Yeah, sure, Mr. Roper.
I'd just like to add some context here. The Planning Commission discussed all of these administrative changes at length. There was debate, there was back and forth. In every case, I went back through and looked at the minutes, just because my recall isn't that great, I freely admit that. Luckily, there are notes, and I can go back and read and know what I'm talking about. In every case, we as a Planning Commission forwarded to public hearings, our own public hearing and then to the Select Board public hearing with unanimous votes. One of those unanimous votes actually included Peter Huttins when he was still on the Planning Commission. So I just want to make sure that, one of the comments was that one person was targeted, and I take a little exception with that too, because that was an example, it was an unfortunate, there were some unfortunate aspects to that. We shouldn't, I don't think we should call people out by name. And I agree with you, Peter, you made that point, and I agree with you wholeheartedly on that. We shouldn't be doing that, and I think that's been corrected. The discussion that we had when four Select Board members came to a Planning Commission meeting and discussed the travel trailer, the camper discussion, my sense at the end of that meeting was we were all in agreement, that, yeah, it's not ideal, but that's probably the best way to move forward. We don't want to set up Chester to be a place where, and this is kind of an extreme example, and I almost hesitate to use it, words out, oh, if you don't have a place to live, you can get a travel trailer and set it up in somebody's driveway and trailer in Chester. That's not a solution to the housing crisis either. I totally empathize with folks who are having trouble getting housing. I guess, I guess the bottom line to my point here is that all of this has been discussed almost ad nauseam, and the Planning Commission has unanimously voted to forward the language that you all are discussing approving tonight. So just add, ask that you consider that. This wasn't some knee-jerk decision to ignore the request of the, of this commission, of this Select Board. And the Select Board did have input into those discussions before we voted to send it back to you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Roper. Any other further discussion on this?
So I have a question. I know we've been around the bush a couple of times regarding this. And can one of you from the Planning Commission or Preston just remind me of what the problem is we're solving with this? I mean, I know we have properties where there's more than one travel trailer, and it's there for a long time, and it's helping to house people who want to live here. Is this something that we can either solve another way or postpone adoption of this particular portion of the bylaws until things settle down a little bit? Because I think what I'm seeing now is, while prices are still high, there are properties that are available. And I know it doesn't solve your son's problem, but it's a movement in the right direction. So I'm just wondering if there's a way that we can kind of work around this.
You're kind of as a Select Board in the thumbs up, thumbs down mode. I took the law out and we're at it again. And I was thinking, could we just delete this particular provision and pass the rest? And I kind of don't think so. Clearly, whoever wrote the law didn't want Select Boards messing around with these things at the last minute. So I would say, you know, your option would be just simply not to adopt it tonight, and that would mean we'd have to talk about it again in one other hearing and bring it back. I know that it was brought up at the Planning Commission level several times, like, let's just drop this one. Let's just, just not, just leave it the way it is now where they're unaddressed. And there were members of the Planning Commission didn't want to do that. So there it is. This is consistent with the state water quality rules, but we talked a lot about how, you know, we don't have to necessarily follow what the state water quality rules say, but that's what it is. It's not a rampant problem now.
Yeah, at this point, we have a motion, and we have a second, and we're discussing it. So it's in our hands until we have a vote and decide where we're going to go with this. If it gets knocked down, it gets sent back and revisited again. I, I am totally against doing that, considering how much work the Planning Commission has put into this, with input from the Select Board, with input from the public, with unanimous decisions to bring it forward. Because we think there might be a little different way, yet we don't have an alternative or an idea of what that different way could be at this time and have more discussion on it. If something comes up in the future, yeah, we could revisit things as we move on and change things if we have to. But at this point, I think it's not a good use of the Planning Commission time, or ours for that matter. But that's, that is my opinion on it. To revisit it and send it back because of that one, that one stipulation that we're talking about and possibly enforcing, possibly not enforcing. And I realize that that is not the best way to do it, but that's what we have right now.
Well, I'm always making comments about unintended consequences. And thinking about this and some of the issues that have come up and the reasons why it might make sense to pass this, all of which you just, some of which you just mentioned. I'm just concerned that there's something that we're not thinking about that has some consequences that we don't intend. Relative to passing it and then not enforcing it, what does that tell the public? It tells the public that we just make rules up and then we're not going to enforce them because we don't feel like it. And so where does that put, not us, but eventually it puts Preston in a bad spot and the DRB in a bad spot. And so whether that's the best way to approach this or do something else that makes sense, and I'm not sure what the answer is, because I do appreciate all the work, I do appreciate all the effort that's gone into it that you folks have done, have made the effort to come up with something. But, you know, I'm listening to not just Arianna, but other people in town who can't find a place to live. And so how do we deal with that? And I realize that the Housing Commission, their job will be to help that. But that's, I'm seeing that as a two to three-year proposal, not an immediate proposal. And so maybe a compromise would be to say, we pass this tonight, or we send it back and say, could you add language that this won't go into effect for three years? And then that gives us a little bit of breathing room to come up with some other alternatives or consider what the application would be over that timeframe and see what the housing market does. Just an idea.
Hang on a second here. Part of unintended consequences, I think all sorts should be considered, are the health aspects of a travel trailer and people living in it year-round and permanent also. Waste water, water that goes to it, and all the other things that are associated with it. And other intended, unintended consequences, without anything on the books, someone could just park four or five trailers in his yard and start renting them out.
Sure.
And I'm sure our neighbors would be not too thrilled about that, if that happened in your neighborhood, or it happened in any neighborhood for that matter. Not to say it's going to happen, but those are other unintended consequences of something like this that could happen. And when I talk about not enforcing it, maybe I shouldn't have put it that way. It's a gray area of whether you enforce it or not, or how stringent you are. And most of those enforcement issues, when they finally get down to it, come before the Select Board, because they're going to involve money and courts and things like that. So we will have some say in it, whether it's enforced at the zoning administrator level or wherever it is, eventually it's going to come before the Select Board to allocate money to enforce it, because that's what it's going to take. And then there's the decisions to be made at that time. So, I mean, there's other aspects to it. And Hugh, you would like to speak to this?
Yeah, Arianna, just kind of, you're kind of speaking about what I was thinking. And one of the things, Lee, I remember when we had the joint meeting, because we all recognized that this is something that can make it tougher for people that are struggling, but at the same time, a lack of any regulation is risky. And one of the things we discussed was, let's not think about enforcement as binary. Let's think about enforcement as enforcement with compassion. So if there's a valid scenario where somebody has to live in a camper for a certain period of time because they just can't get by any other way, then I think between the zoning administrator and the Select Board, you have the latitude and the power to create an enforcement get-well plan that would allow people in need to be okay and be whole, and at the, and at the same time. and be whole. And at the same time, if there was a blatant violation of the bylaws that was not for any reason, that was really a matter of, you know, housing somebody, then you've got a regulation that can be used to take correct action. It's just, really, my message is, I don't think enforcement needs to be binary. I think it can be on a continuum.
Anybody else have any other comments or concerns they would like to voice on this issue? Have to get to a microphone, Kathy.
I just want to point out that right now in the bylaws, this is Kathy Hasbrook. I'm a member of the planning commission. And I want to point out that right now in the bylaws, you need a permit to store a mobile home for six months, and it's renewable for six months. But that's about all we've got that addresses mobile homes in the bylaws.
That's what's there now.
Yeah. So we're not even acknowledging that people might need to live in them while they're looking for a place to live.
Any other comments or concerns? So the motion is on the floor that we accept this proposed administrative amendment to the unified development bylaws as it is written. If there is no further discussion or comment, I would take a vote on this. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye. Aye. And those opposed?
Aye.
Two people didn't vote?
Honestly, I don't know what to do.
Yeah, I'm in the same boat.
I'm at a point where I see the need for this kind of regulation. I just am not comfortable with saying, we're not going to force it, notwithstanding what Hugh just said. I think that's the right thing to do, is to be compassionate. But also, other people are going to sit on this board. Other people are going to sit in your seats. And so how do they interpret this particular bylaw and say, we're going to enforce it or not? So.
That's a problem with all laws.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
Enforcement and the compassion that goes with it.
Yeah. And that's what I'm struggling with. You know, my gut reaction is say, yeah, let's pass this and move on. But on the other hand, I'm just struggling with the fact that there are a number of people who want to be here or are here who can't find housing. And is this going to fix it? No. But is this going to help ameliorate the situation as we move forward and find, you know, get some affordable housing? Possibly, but maybe not. I don't know. And so that's why I'm sitting here and, you know, I'm having this huge fight with myself, like, what do I do? I'm not sure.
It doesn't disallow it. It allows it for 180 days, a half a year.
Yeah, and that goes by like this.
So we have a vote?
Yeah, we have to vote something.
I'm going to say yea.
And Peter, you said no?
I said no.
I will say yea.
You have three yays and one no. The amendment passes and it's accepted.
And I just want to say that I think that this needs to be the impetus for the town. This is something that I have struggled with a little bit in thinking about, and I'm very thankful I didn't have to vote. But, you know, where is the town's role? I think about often, I don't like the idea of a young family living in a camper. Makes me very sad, makes me teary. I don't want little kids living in a camper over the winter in this town. Sorry. So, because I know a family that does. So I think it's something where the town needs to really figure out where is our role. It is not necessarily government's role to fix all these problems. I'm a firm believer in that. However, we as a community and as a society have a role here. And so what is that role? And I think that this is the impetus for all of us to say, okay, we have this. We don't want people living in campers in our community long-term. So what are we as a community going to do about that? And it's not an easy fix. But I think that onus is on all of us to really be thinking about.
Which will get us back to our Housing Commission bylaws when we start heading in that direction.
Yes.
So the motion passes three to one. And now we'll look at the second one, which is the open space. I would entertain a motion to accept the proposed open space amendment to the unified development bylaws as presented. Is there a motion for that?
So moved.
Arianna's the motion. Is there a second?
Yep, I'll second.
Peter's the second, and now discussion on it. Questions, comments, concerns? Anybody? Anything?
I appreciate the work that you guys have done on this. I think it's a step, a good step forward.
This is also, one of the things that could be, just as you're thinking about it, is that this will be the first time this is done in the state.
So they'll be looking to Chester for the example?
Accident.
This is the first time that this has been adopted statewide?
There wasn't, yeah. Jason was totally unaware.
Well, I know.
Okay. That works.
Yeah.
Well, the concept makes a lot of sense. After Irene, it changed everybody's attitudes about flood planes and floods and everything else that can happen. Because this town suffered immensely. It was basically cut off from everybody around us because of roads and bridges and everything else that would destroy. And I remember being on Route 11 West, watching the house there at the intersection just slowly slip into the river and disappear. And it was amazing to see. And that thing was built on the fork of a river. I mean, I don't even know how they even got it in there back in the day when there was no regulation. Beautiful spot, beautiful location with the river divided, and it was gorgeous. But to have a building there was planned with fire for sure. And then eventually Mother Nature said, no, this one's not staying. This one's going down the Connecticut piece by piece. Any further discussion on this? Anybody else have anything else they would like to say? All those in favor of approving the proposed open space amendment as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thanks again to the planning commission for all your hard work and keep it coming. There's a lot there. There's still a lot.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next item on our agenda is the Housing Commission bylaw. I know we looked at this at our last meeting, and we requested a few changes on it. And has everybody had a chance to just go over it? And is everybody okay with it as it is written now?
So I had a question. And I know we answered this. We talked about, I can't remember. So between five and nine members, is that what we decided, or should we go with seven?
No, you had said between five and nine, because what if we have trouble?
The interest.
Okay.
What if we, right.
Okay.
I mean, that was the big.
And it helps with the quorum stuff, too.
Right.
You know?
Okay.
Well, you get the regional planning guy who comes and gives it, and then he doesn't show up again. You know, he's a member of the board, but he stopped, you know, can't make the meetings. And you just end up with that domino. And you want to keep a quorum, but you want to keep, you've got to be able to bring players in to make it work.
So it can grow and condense when needed.
Right.
So the amount of the members, that was one of the changes. What was the other one? Was there another one?
I knew you were going to ask me. It was the language about taking responsibility for finding housing for other people, which we clarified and.
The mission was changed. That's what it was.
It was shortened up to, okay, that's right.
Yeah. We took it, Susan had recommended HUD's mission, the language from HUD. No worries. Thank you. I made the changes a month ago, and I forgot what it was.
I know, and I'm looking at it. And I said, yeah, okay.
Good lord.
So we don't have to vote, we're just signing it?
Make a motion?
Make a motion to accept it?
Make a motion to accept the housing bylaw.
Housing Commission.
Housing Commission governing bylaw as written.
Is there a second?
Second.
Lee's the motion, and Arianna is the second. Any further discussion on it? All those in favor of accepting the Town of Chester Housing Commission governing bylaws, please say aye.
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 Opposed? All good.
Julie, thank you for taking the lead on this. It's an excellent, excellent next step.
Yes, you guys will do appointments, interviews and appointments in August.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Might as well. She's got the whole other pile down there, too. It'll come down here eventually.
It used to be nice to be on the end. You get up, you walk.
Exactly, you get to stretch.
Stretch your legs a little bit.
Oh, yeah. But the problem is, I'm older, I'd have to make another stop.
Next item on our agenda is a discussion regarding the use of economic development funds for electric on the green. In your packet, you have a accounting statement regarding that fund, which is closing market value as of March 31st was $425,804, 88, so about $425,000. And the discussion is regarding whether putting forth some of that monies towards electrical upgrades on the green. Enclosed with that financial statement is the Chester Development Fund. And I've read through it, and I looked at it. And I don't, I can't find the exact place where it talks about just granting the money, as opposed to loaning the money.
Yeah, it talks about loan. There have been times in years past where we have done it with loan forgiveness to the town for work on the green. It's just a matter of if the board is willing to do that again. And if you are willing to do that again, then we should update the policy.
We should, what?
Update the policy.
Yeah, well, I was just going to say, just for clarification, because if this is going to be the second time we're going to use that type of.
Yep.
If we're going to update the policy, I'd like to make another recommendation for non-qualifying business.
Perhaps we should review the policy and make some recommended changes.
Yeah, we'll do a policy review at another time.
And specific to this policy, we could make it as an agenda item, so we could actually change it or amend it as we have to. Right now, we're going to have to deal with the old policy with the caveat that we've done it before like that, and just given it loan forgiveness to do the same thing that we're possibly going to put into.
Well, you can leverage it another way, because there's going to be so many people. Once you set the electric up there, you know, you're going to end up with people who want to use it besides the couple days a year. So you'd look, when you look at it that way, you know, it will pay itself back.
If we charge money for use.
Well, I wouldn't certainly give away free electricity. You're going to charge so much for a hookup.
No, I agree, but that's something else we'd have to discuss.
We have to remember to do.
Well, it's going to, well, the thing that you're starting now is you're opening it up. I mean, it's the Ludlow Farmers Market on Friday is crashing, you know? This is, you know, this is a spot, you know, it's not necessarily on the road as good as that is. But I mean, it makes the opportunity, it makes an opportunity for income.
I mean, I think the last time that we used funds like that, it was for paving.
It was paving the green.
Paving the green in Common Street area. And justification being, it's helping for tourism, it's helping for the businesses to have people come and be there. I mean, you could argue it both ways and stuff. But especially the Village Center, which is, this fund is kind of directed towards. So a lot of times, it ends up being part of the discussion now.
And the Fall Festival Committee is donating $10,000.
Right.
The very high-end price we received was 30. Steve doesn't believe it'll be anywhere near that. He is working with Green Mountain Power to look at some different ways. They've come, him and Wayne have come up with some different ways to do this that will be less expensing, less expensive, less digging on the green, which will save quite a bit of money. I just don't have those fine-tuned numbers. The other plan is that it will not be in for the Fall Festival this year. What we are planning, we don't want to rush it, and I don't want to rip up the green in the summer. So after Fall Festival, after foliage season, so late October, early November, we will, is when the digging will be done and the conduit will be laid. And then the final part of it will happen in the spring of next year. So be less intrusive to the flowers, all of that. What I'm hoping for is just kind of an okay, that I have to secure people if we're going to do this in late October. But I don't want to do that if you don't want to use our match from economic development funds. I don't want to give people the assurance that we're going to do the work.
So for today, are you asking us to approve perhaps a possible range of amount that could be taken from the economic development fund, or just the concept of taking it?
What I'm asking for is a maximum.
No more.
No more than $20,000. I know it will not be that much, but if something happens and we hit our maximum of 30, with Festival donating 10, it gives me my range up to $20,000.
And you just said something about the match. Does this, is there still a match in play?
No, it's not a match. Festival is giving us $10,000 towards the 30.
And the other way to pay for it is through the Economic Development Fund?
Our part of it.
There's not a state fund somewhere? Great. Thank you. Thank you.
And this encompasses not only the green, but across the street where the information booth is, that area, too?
No. No, there's already electric there. A further project will need, there's some electrical work that needs to be done over there as far as.
Spread out a little bit.
As far as improving and adding a few more outlets. But this is just, this is for, along the stone wall between the Baptist Church and the information booth, there will be a total of four pedestals with power. And then there will be a pedestal up, if you go, keep following the stone wall and go up towards the Academy Building, in the corner by the ramp, there will be a pedestal there as well for concerts, the summer concerts.
Oh, yeah, this is the side for, this isn't the green side, this is the information booth side.
This is the information booth side.
Okay. Yeah, she wanted to do the Christmas trees, too, but I bet that would have pushed it.
I thought I asked the question, is it this side?
Maybe you did, maybe I just, no, it's the information booth side.
Yeah.
And part of it's going to encompass the Academy Building, because that's, the upgrade will be in place for that building to have access to whatever's going. And now, that's being considered in this upgrade to make the electrical easier to deal with when the Academy Building comes along in the future, in whatever shape or form it does.
Will there be anything in that green area in the turnaround in front of the Academy Building?
No. It's going to come up along the side of where the flower gardens are, because we don't want, I don't want to disrupt any of those roots. We don't want to kill any of those trees on the lawn of the Academy Building.
So we need a motion?
Yeah. So I'll make a motion that we authorize the use of up to $20,000 from the Economic Development Fund for upgrading electrical on the green.
I'll second.
Lee's the motion, and Peter's the second. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed?
And I'll put the policy on a future agenda.
Yeah, on a future agenda item, we will look at the policy there.
And we will work to keep the cost as well below $20,000.
Next item is to set our tax rate for 2023. Julie, can you take us through that one?
Yep. So we have received the education tax rates from the state. Grand List has been lodged. And so we are now ready to set our tax rate, tax rate for this year, municipal only, is at .9277, which as we projected when we budgeted this year is basically a six cent increase, which is what we anticipated. The local agreement rate stayed relatively the same. The local agreement rate stayed relatively the same. That local agreement, .0001. The local agreement rate, for those who may not know, is, this is the formula that deals with exemptions, veterans exemptions, those dollars still have to be raised to pay for the education, education taxes for the state. They don't exempt those, even though we exempt certain veterans.
We make up for it.
We make up for it, correct. And so that tax rate is .00, so it's four one hundredth of a penny. Education rates, which we, of course, have nothing to do with, but we do collect the tax on it, took a hike this year. Non-residential rate came in at 1.5875, which is an increase of about seven cents. And the residential rate, 1.5330, again, an increase of a little over seven cents. So education rates took a hike. So combined rates, residential, $2.44, 2.4652, non-residential rate, 2.5197. Susan, I will email this to you. Yeah. As anticipated.
Yeah. I mean, it is what it is from town meeting.
Well, it was a tough year. We've come on the backside of two years of COVID, and the highest inflation rates we've had in a long time. I think it's, what, 6%, 7% last year?
It's right there in front of us. It's eight on this piece of paper. That's what I haven't been able to stop looking at.
And every time we turn around, the town, whenever it purchases something or tries to get a service, it's gone up, and not just a little bit. So we would need a motion to set our tax, our tax rates at, our non-residential tax rate at $2, 2.5197, and our residential rate at 2.4652. Someone make that motion, please?
Okay, I'll second it.
Who made the motion?
Nobody did.
Nobody did. Oh, well, I'll take the hit. I'll make the motion.
There you go. I'll second it.
Peter's the motion. Ariana's the second. Any further discussion on this?
I would like to make a comment. That probably sounded like a broken record at this point, but there are so many things that we, as a town, a municipality, are required to do and pay for by the state that it makes me angry. And the biggest is the education, and I know it's important to educate our kids, and I know it's important to support those who are educating our kids, and I throw my full support behind them who are dealing with, in many instances, serious difficulties related to the breakdown of the family structure. But it also seems that the state is driving the boat as far as what money we are spending and why we're spending it and on what we're spending it. And to not have any influence over that is just concerning to me. And so on behalf of all the taxpayers in Chester, I think that it's time for us to start pushing back against the state and the requirements that are being made on us as a town to come up with this kind of money to educate our kids in ways that may not be the best for our community and our kids. Again, I'm a huge advocate of local control, and the more control we have as a municipality, as towns, as parents, the better, in my opinion. So it's my two cents.
Yeah, it's, it's always come up on the education end of it because of the way the state does it. I think, I don't know how many years ago, when that law changed, that education money that each town made, it used to be our money. It used to be our budget, and we did have a lot of control over it. But when they changed the law and it was all pooled into the state, it seemed like a lot changed back then. And that's when I think we lost control over the education part of it, whereas the state decided on a lot of the conditions and the requirements on how money was gonna be spent and what was gonna happen.
Because if we didn't do what the state wants us to, we'd get no money.
And especially when it comes to other grants and other things like that, too.
So it's, it's a discussion for another time, maybe not us, but I think that just putting that out there, so people understand while the tax rate is going up, not all of it is something that we, as a select board, can control.
Absolutely.
One item that you did mention, Lee, and you've, you've mentioned it before, is the decline of the family structure. And I agree with you, but sometimes that needs a little definition of family structure, because family structure means a lot of different things to different people. And I, you know, and I agree with you. I think the family structure is definitely suffering these days, but I just wanna make sure that when we talk about things like a family structure, that we are inclusive about the many diverse family structures that are out there also.
One of the things that has come up that people have spoke to me about is the number of things that were brought up at town meetings that no one represented. And I think it would be real, as a select board, that's something that we can say, if you want money, somebody has to be here, you know? And that's a policy that we can make that would have a direct implication right off the bat.
The other thing I need that I, probably gonna get hung for saying this, but the other, whatever, the other thing that, that goes along with that is something that we've, we have talked about in the office, is just based on things that I've been told by people who have done some research, I think it also would be prudent to obtain financials from some of those organizations that we give money to.
So isn't there a process by which those groups are able to get something on the warning?
They send us.
There is, there is. It's petition, it's, it's, so you changed it a couple of years ago when you said if they're not changing their amount, they have to write a letter. But we can relook at some of that and, and require that there be.
So by petition, it means they submit a letter and say, can we add, do they need 130 signatures or whatever the number?
So what you do change when you did the special appropriations policy a few years ago, this was a COVID thing that you, you guys adopted. It used to be that, yes, you had to have the signatures of 5% of the voters, but then you adopted a policy that said, if your request is, has not changed from previous years, then you just need to submit a letter. We're not gonna make you go out and get the 5% signatures. If it changes, if you're asking for more, then you have to get a petition. So that was adopted a few years ago.
Okay.
And certainly something you can look at again if you want.
So does that give us the ability to look into financial aspects?
There were years where we required that they, that the financials were not published. They were just reviewed and kept here. I don't actually even know who reviewed them because I never did, but there was always a brief balance sheet that you had to provide. We haven't done that in years.
Well, these are nonprofits, so there, it should be available, or.
It is public information.
Certain amount of it is.
Public information on that.
And I am not suggesting that we publish that information.
No, no, but I'm just wondering if we have the authority to ask for that information?
I believe that we do. I believe that we do.
Could we perhaps add an item to an agenda so that we can review this policy?
Absolutely, yeah.
And rewrite it?
The interesting.
Maybe we, sorry, maybe we go back to, if, if the change was made as a result of COVID circumstances, we simply reflect on it and say, great, for all intents and purposes, we're back open. Let's go back to where we were.
Absolutely.
And reflect on it there.
Absolutely.
Any other further discussion on our tax rate, which is pretty all-encompassing, I guess, because it's the money for everything. So I guess any topics, okay? All those in favor of approving the tax rates as stated, please say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Tax rates set. Oh, is this the, the real one?
That's, yes, that's the one I need you to sign. Yeah.
So I'll set down there, Pete?
I am, okay, well, I, we still wanna set payroll, right? Everybody wants to be paid this week, and we have to set the rest. Yeah, I'm good.
No, I just didn't know if you had gotten the document and signed it.
No, I was gonna keep a stack. Keep passing them down. I'm good. I got the, I have, I have the end chair now, see?
Changed everything.
Next item is loan documents for the secondary well project. Julie?
So this is a project you guys approved the application for. This is a secondary well. So loan agreement has come through, loan is 75,000. We did receive a $21,000 subsidy. So this is just the loan paperwork that follows up the application that was approved.
And refresh my memory on how this gets paid back and what, how does it work? It takes a few years before we even get into it?
It takes a few years before you have to repay it. It can roll into a construction project, which often we do, because often those construction projects get grant-funded. So, and this is water. This is not hit the general fund, so this has nothing to do with the tax rates that you just set. It's the water rates that you're gonna set next meeting. There is a, water has a healthy fund balance, a little over a million dollars. So any of the funds required for this would come from that fund balance.
Where, where are they gonna dig?
I'm sorry, what was that?
Where, where, where are they, have they chosen a spot?
The drill, they're, they will be drilling at the Jeffrey Well for a secondary source there. That's our preferred source. The second spot is Jeff Holden's lower field is also a key location. They're gonna do some drilling there as well, test drills.
So we have our select board hats on, and this is a water thing?
Yep, it's okay for the load.
We're okay with it.
You're okay. All right. Because you're one in the same. This one, this one, I know, you're good. You're good, you're good. I hate to go to the old adage. So this is the loan agreement, and they authorize you to sign his chair.
So I entertain a motion to authorize the chair to sign this loan agreement for the amount of $75,000 for the water fund.
So moved.
Second.
Lee's the motion. Peter's the second. Any further discussion on this? When are they gonna start this?
Jeff Hoffers just waiting on the drillers, waiting on dates for the drillers. Yep.
Who's doing the drilling?
I'm not sure who he's contracting with. Jeff Hoffers overseeing it.
Right. So did we win the arm wrestling match with the guy from the state, or how did that go down?
He's retired.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we waited long enough.
Wow. It only cost us how much money to wait him out?
Yeah. We won't go there on camera. Really, he has retired. There is somebody new.
So the new person coming in just agreed with us and said, yeah, this is fine?
No. The new person, we, Scott Stewart had agreed as well that we would do drilling on the Jeffrey Well site.
Okay.
We had a burden, and we will still have a burden. We have a hurdle we have to overcome, proving to them that the redundancy in that well source is not gonna be an issue. So we will still have to do that. Jeff Hoffers will probably just rewrite his report and change the date. Hopefully, it'd be something along those lines, but we're hoping that the drilling will back up what we, what we suspect, which is that there really is not an issue, and it should be fine. It's just costing you $75,000 to do that.
The secondary choice on the Holden property there is, it's still the same act.
The same act, isn't it?
Correct, but he was fine with that spot.
But not the first.
Correct. Again, we have, we have somebody new we're dealing with at the state, so we have to do drilling either way. That's what, that's why they went ahead and gave us the, approved the project.
So by new, like newbie, or just somebody else taking over?
New in the position, I believe.
Okay, good.
Has an idea.
I could tell you, I won't.
Yeah. Could be here for days.
Next item is the asset management.
No, you've got more things to sign. You also have to sign the note that goes with the loan. You all have to sign that one.
We don't need three separate motions. Usually on loans and stuff like this, we end up doing.
And then you need to sign the resolution. Sorry, now you can go. I said, sorry, now you can go.
Let's package them together. That's the amendment line. Just piling them up. The next item, the added agenda item, was an amendment to the loan application to our asset management plan. So that's.
Just came in?
So this just came in from Naomi today. She knew, had discovered that because of the identification of 70 new manholes, Peter.
It's not my fault. I just identified people.
70 manholes that were uncovered. We do not have 130, we have 200. That, of course, has raised the cost of all of the TV work and the scoping of those pipes, so it's raised the project another $24,000. That will, in essence, also raise our subsidy that we received, but we need to amend the application, requesting the additional $24,000. So.
The discovery of those extra manholes, I think, is gonna be a plus for the town to know that they were there.
The one that crosses the railroad tracks, that's behind Erskine's, opens up that whole hillside, and that would, you don't have to deal with the railroad.
Right. Oh, yeah. There's lots of, lots of benefits that come from it. I don't, I just need a motion and your approval to amend the application.
So I'll make a motion.
Lee's the motion, and Peter's the second, to approve the asset management plan amendment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All good?
That's all I need.
See, but when, when you get to this, one of the things that are not done on the town, on the plans that are done for a project, is that when you do a sketch that amends a plan, there, there are sketches that were miscellaneous places, but they were never, what you do is you tape them on the plan and copy the plan. And when those, in those additional projects, that was never done. So you have like a main line, but then where an additional manhole was put in was done on a separate sketch, but it was never included on the plan. So a lot of these things were probably known by the original, you know, proof in the 60s.
Yep.
But there's a way of plan management that, on construction projects, that would save us money in the long term if we just had some tape.
Yeah.
We've been going through the asset management plan for different parts of the, of our, of the facilities and stuff, and the more data and the more information we have.
Yep.
The easier things get in the long run, and the more important it is to have that information when, when things come up. Just housekeeping on these.
Housekeeping, two cemetery D's.
Two cemetery D's for Robert and Susan Turco, and Elizabeth and Roy Tetrault. Looks like it might start raining again. It hasn't rained in an hour or two, so.
It was pouring buckets here this afternoon. It was on a roof, and it's like, oh, okay, it's sprinkling. It's like, psh. Right on Main Street.
This afternoon.
I get a, I get a downpour on Mattson. I'm talking to my mom on the phone, crystal clear, sunshiny. She's on Main Street. Do the opposite.
Yeah, when I get home, Heidi had left our car out with the windows open. It's like, oh, great, but now the drop.
About 10 minutes, and I was like.
Yeah.
Tried a hay.
Most of the farmers, they said they're getting half the amount of hay that they've gotten in other years. I talked to most of the farmers. They said they're getting half the amount of hay that they've gotten in other years.
We've had, we've had a pre-May cycle and we had one four day, one cycle after that and that's it. And usually I have 3,000 bales in and I have none.
Future agenda items, new business. Anybody have anything they would like to see on future agenda? I know we talked about the policy for the economic development monies and there was something else that we mentioned today already that I've already forgotten.
Peter's goal to get Route 35 onto the state's agenda.
Well, we can do, we can do a roads thing because it's sort of, by moment, I've been working through, one of the projects that I was assigned is to go, was to go through the class four roads and then kind of see what we can do with those. And if we can, some that we can get to pass and some we can't. And I've been, this is a, this was, and I'm just trying, just working through, trying to find all the information and identify it. The highway map is what the state's going to hold us to and then go through and do a spreadsheet about what's there. So at some point, we're going to have to kind of have a discussion on that because you want to look at policy. Because there are things that you, that aren't used that are turned, that could be trails, but then there's property out there that's, that's probably, this is the only access. So maybe you're going to have to think maybe a policy statement on class four roads.
We can look at the issue in general, the whole thing.
So let me tell you, so a couple of things. Are you still going to have just one meeting in August?
Well, no, you can put this off till September.
Okay.
No, it's, it's, it's turning, it's turning into quite a quest.
Yeah, yes, as, yeah. Are you wanting just one meeting in August?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So you've got.
Or half a meeting.
You've got.
Just kidding.
You've got water sewer rates. You've got the financial.
This is August.
Yeah, you've got the financial update. You have the short-term rental. You have, M&amp;T Bank will be coming to do their presentation on the economic development funds. You have the capital equipment loan for the truck. You have the housing commission interview and appointments. And potentially updates to a traffic ordinance, although that could probably get pushed to September.
What's the traffic ordinance? A little more parameter there.
So the traffic ordinance, again, hasn't been updated since 1978.
Oh, yeah, no.
So some traffic laws have changed since then, a few.
Should that, should that be combined with the road conversation?
Uh, no, this is completely different. This is enforcement of traffic violations. Yeah, 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 yeah. Some completely different. And some things that we're looking to do as far as, I'm probably going to mess this up. Tom's not here. So the overweight, not overweight, no, not overweight, oversized loads coming through town.
Houses.
There are specific restrictions on their state permit that they have to get. Currently, when we cite them in violation of those state restrictions, the money goes to the state. There's a way to add some language in our traffic ordinance that says that ticket revenue comes to the town.
We don't even get a percentage of the first one?
We want the money.
Yeah, I like this.
No, we get nothing because we don't have it in our ordinance. So guess what?
We're going to write a new ordinance.
And a few other things that we kind of trickled upon.
I always thought that.
Well, and that's a 300 buck a pop ticket.
But I always thought whatever violation that they issued, that we got a part of it.
Not necessarily.
Because those were the court fees or something under the police budget.
Oversized.
But every year we have like a $30,000 to $40,000 income regarding court fees. So what, what is that money? Isn't that money from?
Oversized loads are in a different category. They're not, it's under a different, it's under a different statute. It's not under, that's the difference.
How often do we pull those things over?
Frequently.
Did you violate that permit if you're trying to do stuff all the time?
Absolutely.
It's the hours of operation is the big one, when school's going.
Exactly.
They're parked on both sides of the street for the kids and to get in and out. And then this thing comes rolling through and there's no.
Oh, that reminds me of something.
So. Anyway, that's one of the traffic ordinance things.
But where we, what we were talking about was the vast agenda potentially. Have we, I apologize, I don't remember. Are we having a second meeting in July? Are we having a July?
No.
Second meeting? Okay.
No.
I'm all for, I'm in. Three hours, first week in August. I'm good.
So my other question for you is, so I have finally been contacted about the grievance hearing. That was the grievance hearing, which the applicant did not, or the grievance did not show up for. So are you available on the 16th for just that purpose?
See, in my mind.
I am not.
We meet when we meet.
I can, I'm happy.
She's asking, she's asking for something above that.
That's fine. Then we will push it to September. I'm just asking the board if you, it's totally up to you guys.
I could, but I prefer not to.
Okay, so the first meeting in September. That's fine.
So I, two things. One is related to Route 35. So I think that we need to go visit the town of Grafton and complain about the state of their road.
It's entered my mind many times.
Do you remember when they were squawking about?
Those of you who may not know.
We should take the high road, Lee, not the high.
Before we paved Route 35, we were actually waiting for the grant money and then for bidding and for the contractor to have availability, but the paving of Route 35 got so bad and it was delayed for a couple of years. And the town of Grafton sent a petition signed by a bunch of their people and Chester residents, I will add, who insisted that we do it and they were going to report us to the state and made this whole to-do. We paved ours and it greatly highlighted how horrible theirs is and they have done nothing with it since.
Well, yeah, but that, that gets back to what would it take to walk through that and say, town of Chester, town of Grafton, town of Athens, town of New Fane. You know, do you want to sign a petition to roll that over to the state? How many people would you get? Town meeting, you could probably fill those things up.
So the second question I had, and it's not an agenda item, but I noticed that the lights for the school are still flashing during. Yeah, but it's summer. Who has jurisdiction or access to those lights?
Facilities manager.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
That would be Todd Perrin, I believe.
I will ask.
Because every year it's the same thing. They blink through August and then they shut off for a week and then they come back on again. So it's kind of annoying.
I'll ask.
Not that I speed through there or anything, but it's just.
I'll ask Todd. I have to talk to him anyway.
So we'll stay with one meeting for August and it just might be a little longer than expected, but.
That's great.
Anybody have, anything else they would like to have? Future agenda. It doesn't have to be August. I know, Peter, you talked about the roads and that'll be in the fall. That's going to be an interesting one. I've always, that's been an interest of mine since the beginning of being on the select board, back from the days of the ancient roads discussions in 2010 or 2012 it was. That was the time to do everything. But, I mean, I think Chester took some steps back then, but not, not a lot, like you were saying.
They didn't do what Andover did. Andover took a lot of stuff.
Turned everything into trails.
Yeah.
Yeah, we took them in. We maintained the class fours that we wanted to keep.
But we didn't, we didn't go through like and identify a bunch of old, old roads, which is what happened in Andover.
No, there were about 15 that we did.
But that is what we're talking, you're talking about doing something similar to that. We need to look at the class four roads and determine what we're.
Well, not, I'm not advocating discontinuing.
Okay.
That's, that's not, there's a, we're going to re, what I am looking at is what are easy, my first layout is easy reclassifications that won't affect the butters. But I'm going to end up with a list that is, you know, that'll identify, I can identify every butter that only has access to this point. And I don't think that we can, that's what I mean, it kind of is be a policy decision because you can't really say, you know, it's a class four road, we're going to turn into a path that you no longer have access to your property.
Right, and so we'll, we'll put it on an agenda for further discussion. There's a lot of statute around how to reclassify a road. Each road would have to be, you know, there's a lot to it. So I'll, when we're ready to do it, we'll get you all of that process. It's a lengthy process.
Maybe abandon a few.
Wait, it takes a lot of nature blocks.
Anything else? I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Any second on that?
Second.
I'll second that.
Two-hour meeting, that is not bad.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Adjourned, please say aye.
Two hours to that list is not bad.